So the public may also submit comments via the website under government slash city council slash contact the council. And would you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we haven't done that in a while. We used to do that during COVID and it seemed a little smoother then. All right, would you please join me for a moment of silence? And now for roll call, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Council Martel.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
Council Trenchmontane. Pete, gotta unmute your thing.
Uh oh.
Okay, present.
There we go. Now I see your picture. Counsel Hanselman?
Present.
Counsel Stackpole is absent with excused absent, and I'm Mayor Brink. Also, someplace in all of these names, you will see, I actually see Steve's face, City Manager Steve Buck, and Executive Minister Larissa Ricketts is actually, oh, I see her on there too. So let's move right ahead. We have two sets of minutes. In order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I cannot vote on that where I was an excused absence that day, but I believe the rest of you can. So again, we have to go through the role.
Pete was not present.
Because every time we vote, we have to go through this.
But Pete was not present.
Pete was not present either.
Correct. Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second. And if you, I think this is being recorded, but it was Nate that seconded it. And so I'll vote on this. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
Council Martel?
Yeah, I'll second that. Yes.
It's already seconded. You're just.
Yeah, I was just wanting to clarify that it was me that seconded it.
Oh, you that seconded it. Okay.
Unless we bolted at the same time. All right, approve it.
Super. Counsel Hitchcock?
I know sometimes the mayor thinks I'm speaking when I'm not speaking, especially with my hands. I, yes.
All right. Hey, I've had my eyes fixed. I should be able to see this now. Counsel Trenchmontane, you're gonna abstain from this? And Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
And Counsel Stackpole is not here, and I am Mayor Brink, and I also have to abstain. All right, the next one is in order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. So could I have a motion, please? I'm guessing eight.
Yes, ma'am. May I make the motion to approve the executive session minutes?
And Anne?
I will second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and we'll take a, did I have a motion?
I, yes.
Okay, thank you. A second. And let's vote on this. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Trenchmontane? Oh, you can't, you're abstaining. Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole isn't here, and I'm Mayor Brink, and I am also abstaining. All right.
I will also vote in favor. I think you skipped me, Madam Mayor, but I vote in favor.
Right, okay. Oh, no, I think I did say you. I think you also said you made the motion.
I made the motion, but I also vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Look, we'll get through this meeting no matter what, guys. All right, and I do not have a report, and I don't believe we had any subcommittees in the meantime that I felt we did okay. Let's go right on to Steve's report for the city manager.
Okay, I will share this on the screen. The first is updates on the fire station construction. We had a bid opening on November twentieth at two, two P M. There were fourteen firms that took out bids. Seven of those firms submitted bids to us. The base bid, which is the building only without the additive alternatives and the, some of the fixtures and such, ranged from fourteen point nine million to nineteen point oh-two-five million. When you add in the base plus the alternatives, we had bid ranges that went from seventeen point two million to twenty-two point two million dollars. The three apparent low bidders were Benchmark Construction, Dukas Construction, and Dalton's Construction. When you analyze that, the bid differential, there was a range of five hundred thousand dollars across all three of those low bids, so it's a two-point-nine percent spread. That was excellent to see that in that it gave us very tight bids. There was about thirty lines of codes that were called out as far as the bid sections in there. And when you look across those three low bids, or even across the three low bids, there was very little disagreement as far as variations across those lines. So it was a very tight bid process, very secure bid process. We're very pleased with the results. The admin team then jumped from there, so that was on a Thursday. By Monday of the following week, we did an interview with Benchmark. The outcome of the interview with Benchmark is that if they're ultimately selected, their general would be Flo, I'm gonna mispronounce the last name, Ho- Ho- Hoaxa. The senior project manager would be Tim Summers. I, on the way out, shaking hands, I said, I know that I've seen you before. He says, yes, you have. They did the construction of the improvements and upgrades to the Margaret Chase Smith School. I knew that's, I, so that's where I knew him from. And then the site superintendent would be Zach Hodges. We reviewed, there were twenty subcontractor areas. We went through all twenty of those. There were no areas of concern with any of those subcontractors. WBSC, our engineering firm, knew that all of those subcontractors was very pleased with that list. There were six areas where specific materials or supplies were called out as sole source. Could be no substitution. They were compliant with all six of those elements in there. We went through the construction management, the meeting schedules, and reporting as would be set forward if selected. We were very pleased with that. The interview was productive and very informative, and we ended with a very positive impression of Benchmark. They're based out of Westbrook. So for the December sixteenth meeting, we are bringing to the city council a recommendation on Benchmark, provided nothing else is found in between. Still doing checks on them. We will have in there a summary of the bid tabulations, summary of the interview, qualifications of the general contractor. Benchmark is the low bidder, so we don't have to worry about justifying taking somebody other than that. We'll also have a budget comparison that looks at the budget that was proposed based upon the engineered estimates for the November twenty twenty-four referendum bid. We'll have a budget calculation that show a comparison of where we're at at the end of the bid results. And then there's the consumables. We call the consumables, the firematic pieces. The city admin is buying a significant amount of materials and equipment that's going on the inside to avoid a historical fifteen percent G C markup on those. It's actually Assistant Chief Watkins that's gonna be doing a large part of that. He has his list, so WBRC is going through that. That list was not updated as regularly as the construction cost was. So some of the savings that we're seeing right now, which is about four and a half million dollars, is gonna be consumed on those consumables. But the latest estimates they had today from WBRC, they'd updated all the three items on there, and the budget was still four-point-three million dollars, four-point-three-nine million dollars under what was accepted for a budget for the headquarters station last November. That's our starting point, and we'll get all of that to you for the December sixteenth meeting. Put a note in here, end of road construction, meeting with Public Works Director Matt Hill today. He's indicated that all of the roads have been closed up for the year, and they were able to finish off the wear course, wear course paving on some of the streets that were outstanding. So those projects have been closed up for the year. Next is a note, the third annual York County Legislative Summit. That will be this coming Wednesday, tomorrow, December third, twenty twenty-five, starting at five-thirty at the Sanford Performing Arts Center. We've had approximately sixty people that have RSVP'd for the formal response that they will be attending. And I think there are about eight or nine legislators to date. We're anticipating more will show up. They just haven't been able to RSVP to us. On the agenda, Carter Friend will be doing an opening statement for the forum, because this is a York County-wide presentation as far as homelessness, elements around housing and such under that. Emily Flinkstrom is gonna be the first presenter. She'll be presenting on the Housing Continuum and the legislative successes that came out of the last session. So we're gonna start off with a very positive interaction with our legislators. The funding that came comes predominantly through main state housing will be discussed and the positive impacts and how all of the various agencies partnering together are making that work successfully here in York County. Emily will also be going over all of the, many of the pieces of legislation that were pushed over into the coming short session coming up, starting in January, and talking about the, what positive aspects could come out of those should those pieces be passed by our York County delegation enacting on those. The next piece, I'm very, very pleased with this. Jake Hammer, who's the General Assistance Supervisor in the city of Biddeford, is going to be presenting. We had three communities plus a regional piece of information. So Fair Tide does G A for the Greater Elliott and York area. So we have Sanford's, Biddeford's, Old Orchard Beach, and that regional piece from Emily Flinkstrom, comparing general assistance data, and the theme that's coming out of that is it has become a housing response program as opposed to what it used to be. So we show the, we show the ramp up in there. We show the utilization. And Jake Hammer will discuss that with our legislators as to why it would be important for them to pass what we call the Omnibus Bill, which includes taking us from the seventy percent reimbursement to the ninety percent reimbursement, even over a period of years, would be very positive. Gonna have a question and answer session after, after those two presentations. And then we're going to go into resource gaps, and that's gonna be presented by our police chief, Eric Small, and the deputy director of the Sanford Housing Authority, Jen Willett. They're gonna talk about the resource gaps that come from the group of chronically unhoused individuals that nearly one hundred percent of them have either substance use disorder or severe mental illness or the combination of the two. So those statistics are gonna be presented that comes out of that point in time, as well as the ESHAP data, data sets that comes through main state housing. They're gonna do a case study on an individual that passed away from an overdose and a case study on an individual that was successful in getting into diversion and turning that person's life around, talk about where, where the differences are there and where the shortcomings are that prevented the success of one versus the failure of an individual that passed, actually passed away. And then we're gonna engage legislators again in questions and answers around that particular section, as well as the overall piece, which last year, when we presented in combination with the school departments, the school districts across York County, there was too much in too short of time. So we did not have that time for the legislative input back and forth at the end of the municipal section. We don't have the schools this year, so we've preserved that time and space. So that's basically all I have on the homeless side, this, this report, period, because all of the effort has been focused around that. I very much want to thank our staff here for the city. Larissa Ricketts has done a large amount of work on this, and Megan Bolver has taken everybody's information and put it into a compliant presentation. And I, and I said to her just yesterday, I believe, believe it was, did you ever think that you're gonna know this much about housing unhoused people and the other topics that are gonna be covered? So, yes. The last thing that I'll close with is, Larissa has posted this out here. We have openings for boards and committees for this year. The Airport Advisory Committee has two openings, and at the end of this, there's a, I'll tell you where you can apply for these positions, but there's two openings for the Airport Advisory Committee. Board of Appeals has two openings. Board of Assessment Review has one opening. Design Review Committee has up to three openings. Planning Board has three openings. That's a heavy lift. That's, that's, that's a difficult one. Losing that, that amount of institutional knowledge hurts a bit. Recreation Advisory Board has two openings. Sanford Arts Commission has five openings. Sanford Housing Authority Board of Commissioners has one opening. And the Trails Committee has up to five openings for people to sign up for. So the deadline for applications is Monday, December twenty-second, by five-thirty. That's close of business on that day, and appointments will be made January sixth at the council meeting. So you can, applications and committee descriptions are available by contacting the Sanford City Managers Office at three-two-four-nine-one-seven-three, or you can email at sancommittees01@sanfordmain.org, or you can visit the city's website at www.sanfordmain.org. Look for government boards and committees in the drop-down tabs to download a fillable application form that you can then send in to the city office. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I probably also will make a comment about Megan in those meetings about developing the, the presentation we're gonna do Wednesday night. It was amazing watching her corral this group of people who are all talking at the same time. So I give kudos for her ability to do that, because they're very strong personalities in this meeting, and she was able to synthesize everything that people had to say. So it was just amazing. So I'm looking forward to this Wednesday night's meeting. All right, moving.
Mayor, could I also put a reminder out? So today was our first, you know, quote-unquote, major snowstorm. By southern Maine standards, I'll add, it's a major snowstorm. But so my, my reference point is, we, we put our parking ban out, which, which came into effect, you know, on-street parking ban for the snow emergency, went into effect at six o'clock this morning. Police department was out working through the night, putting notifications on vehicles, trying to make contact with people to move their vehicle off the street and such under that. At eight o'clock this morning, we had noted eighty-three illegally parked vehicles pursuant to the snow ban. That's a heavy lift, so Public Works was pretty discouraged by the people's lack of response. Talked with Deputy Chief Gondier this morning. The patrol was actively pursuing this. It's a fifty-dollar fine for parking on the street during the snow ban, when the snow ban is out there. So they put warnings on the cars. They also put a how, a notification on there with a Q R code where they can go to sign up for the parking bans to receive notifications in the future. So the moral of the story is, there were some tickets that were written in this snowstorm. So the first snowstorm is kind of the learning storm, and there's no excuses after that. People were literally moving their vehicles around the city, and they were finding the same vehicles in different locations as they were getting moved around, but all the time left on the streets. So we have two, two parking lots. We have the one at Heritage Crossing that people can park in before the storm and move the vehicles out, not more than two hours after the lifting of the parking bans. We also have the parking lot at Benton Park, off in Robert Street, where the public can park during snow bands if they have no other available off-street parking for, for themselves. So just a warning for the public that delinquency does not exist after this first storm. They will be ticketed and/or towed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. All right, I'm gonna bring this up under communications just because I was online and I was seeing the number of town and city council meetings that had to have been canceled for tonight. And I'd like to point out, because Sanford has perfected the Zoom meeting, we were able to hold this meeting tonight and not having to cancel it. So we can still keep doing business. So I'd like to congratulate the people during COVID who helped put this all together so that Sanford, nothing stopped Sanford. We can still keep moving ahead. So for all those people who are a part of that, thank you very much. All right, we have, under public participation, Christopher Haywood would like to speak. And, and I finally got to meet Christopher. He actually attended our Build Grant meeting out last week, last week or the week before. I can't remember which it was. So I finally got to meet him and not just a person, you know, out there. So Christopher, I'm not seeing your name. I hope I can see Chris.
Hi, Mayor.
Hello.
Can anybody run for the board, the committees?
Yes, anybody, Sanford Springville resident can run.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anything else? Okay, let's move right ahead to public hearings. I'm gonna hereby open the first public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal adult-use retail marijuana store license from R L to L L C, D slash B slash A Friendly Fire Recreational at seventy-two Emery Street, Unit one oh five, Sanford, Maine. Is there anybody to speak against? Excuse me, anybody to speak for? Anybody to speak against? Seeing none, I close this hearing. I'll open up the second hearing, which is a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Lost Horse Cultivations LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at eighty-one Industrial Avenue, Unit B, Sanford, Maine. Is there anybody to speak in favor? Anybody against? Seeing none, I close this hearing. The third hearing is a public hearing on extension of the ordinance established memorandum on the raising of mobile home park lot rents. Is there anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? I hereby close this.
Can you hear me?
I can't. I don't see a hand raised.
Can you raise a hand?
So I don't know who's speaking.
This is James Polk.
James Polk.
For the moratorium for the mobile home park.
Okay, and James, are you speaking in favor or against?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Excellent.
And on top of that question, what is our recourse when the companies will not abide by it?
It calls out for a hundred-dollar fine in the ordinance, in the moratorium, for each violation. And beyond that, you'd have to approach it as a Rule eighty K procedure, as a land use violation, and take the entity to court.
Okay. Does the town's attorney have ability to help us that are involved in this?
The town's attorney works for the city, not for you as an individual, and will not be assisting in any, any legal filings that you might have with the park owner or otherwise. That's a simple matter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I, seeing none other, I will close this hearing. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which typically, I usually ask if there are any comments from the council on the consent agenda, but I'm gonna, it's gonna be a little different where this is a Zoom. And so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the license request detailed under item twenty-five slash three-eighty-one slash zero-one and authorize the city manager to sign the license on the city council's behalf due to the winter storm necessitating a full remote meeting pursuant to Section Six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Do I have a second? Anne?
I will second that, Madam Mayor.
And now we'll go for, any other questions on that? Okay, so to let you know what was under that in, that was the two renewals of the marijuana store and the, the medical one, so the ones that we read. The third hearing is, we're gonna take that up in a few minutes, under new business. So Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes, approve.
Counsel Martel?
Yes.
Counsel Hitchcock?
Yes.
I got you that time. Counsel Trenchmontane? Unmute.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
And I'm, Mayor Brink and I say yes also, so thank you. All right, now there's no old business. Let's move on to new business. In order to amend the Mission Square Retirement Plan for compliance with Secure two-point-zero Act. And Steve, are you handling this or somebody else?
I'm taking this one this evening.
All right.
So in, in your packet is the documentation that was filled out pursuant to meetings with our H R department to bring us into complacency with both the Secure Act one-point-oh and the Secure Act two-point-oh. If any of you enjoy reading Federal Tax Code. So there, I know Anne understands this. I, I asked Chad, give me a summary, summary, so I don't have to write, drill down on all that. Love, love it for that. So, so what this is, so the city has had for decades, the four-fifty-seven B plan, it's now under Mission Square. They've changed their name, but it's under Mission Square. And this is for all eligible employees that either are ineligible to, to accept the, the main PERS, the main employee retirement program, and/or have selected to not. And then under both the city's personnel policy and the employment agreements, there are set maximum amounts that the city will match up to. So there's set contributions in there. So under the, both the Secure Act one-point-oh and Secure Act two-point-oh, we now need to make amendments for our deferred compensation plan to bring them into alignment with the changes in both of those acts. And the revisions expand employee access. It modernizes our plan design, and it adds new flexibility for savings, withdrawals, and employer contributions. So the summation of those are, the, the new amendments would take effect January first, twenty twenty-six for all permanent and full-time employees, again, that only qualify under either our personnel policy and/or our appointment agreements, and who have not been able to either select main PERS or they're otherwise ineligible. It will have the addition of the Roth account features, so there's additional makeup time that you, that you can do in there by age categories that are now, when you're doing that higher amount that's allowed under the federal designations, a portion of that, when you get into the highest amount, is designated as a Roth account, so it's gonna go in post-tax and will be available for withdrawals absent taxation. There's new in-service withdrawals that lowers it down to fifty-nine and a half, enabling earlier access to funds under the Federal Secure Act. Employer contributions, those all stay the same as far as how we have those spelled out in the personnel policies or the employment agreements. There was updates for the updated military service provisions under the Federal Heart Act. Those have been accounted for in here. There's new emergency and hardship withdrawal options that came under the Secure Act two-point-oh that allows for a ten-thousand-dollar domestic abuse withdrawal, which is subject to self-certification. Thousand-dollar emergency expense withdrawal, one per year, again, self-certification. Self-certification for unforeseeable emergency withdrawals and penalty-free natural disaster distributions up to twenty-two thousand dollars per event. So if a natural disaster is declared, say your flood gets, your home gets flooded out here in Sanford, there's a natural declaration of emergency declared in there, then you would qualify. You could apply. You could pull up to twenty-two thousand dollars out of your retirement account. You could pull up to twenty-two thousand dollars out of your retirement account and, uh, to do fix, fix, fixtures on your home and other emergency aspects. Uh, let's see. So I think that's, that's the majority of, that, that is the outline, uh, in here that's gonna change for us. Um, so I, I will give kudos to our HR department to spend an extraordinary amount of time going through all of that. Uh, we had a series of meetings on that to make sure that the, the, the plan changes in there were, were, uh, reflected appropriately and in compliance with all of our personnel policy as well as the, um, employment agreements for those qualifying and that we made all of the changes that were necessary uh, prior to the January first, twenty-twenty-six implementation. Any questions on that? And we, and we have, uh, both Stacy Johnson and Stacy Howes are on, online here as well tonight, if there are any other questions.
Okay. I don't see any questions. Oh, Jonathan?
So just, just to kinda clarify for, maybe for the audience, these are, these are changes that are required by, because of changes in federal law, so we're just updating our policies to comply. Is that, is that an accurate statement? Okay. All right.
It is, it is. There's no, yeah, there's, there's no increased contribution on the city's behalf, and those have already been defined. We're, we're coming into compliance with the, the, both of those Secure Acts.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve these updates as presented.
Thank you. And a second, Nate?
I'll second.
Thank you. And now we'll vote on this. Uh, Deputy Mayor Hurley? I need to hear your voice. You need to take it off mute.
Yeah, I, you know, my clicker was on it. I just pressed quick, approve.
Yes, thank you. Council Martel?
Yes.
Hitchcock, Council Hitchcock?
Yes.
Okay. Council Trenchmontane?
Yes.
And Pete, we need to see your face. That's part of the rules. They have to see your face when you vote. You're still on mute.
Wait a minute.
Now you can say yes.
Yes.
There you go. All right. Council Ha- Hanselman?
Yes.
And I'm Mayor Brink and mine is a yes also. Thank you. Um, the next is in order to extend the moratorium on mobile home park lot rental increases pursuant to Sections two fourteen-point-one of the San Francisco City Council Charter. This item must be read on two separate occa- two occasions. This is the first reading, so we are not voting on this. This is just the first reading. So are there any comments or questions on this? Steve?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on, on this. So, uh, I know this is a, a topic of utmost importance for, uh, a, a number of people here in our community in, in at least three of the mobile home parks of, of concern. So, um, I had a, so the, the, the reason the ordinance is coming forward right now is the emergency ordinance was only good for ninety-one days. That, that expires December seventeenth, um, of, of this year. So in order to keep that ordinance in place until the state model ordinance is put out there and the city's had time to consider it, make amendments to it and consider its, its adoption going forward, uh, we need to extend, extend this period of time out there. So this is the first read on this. The second read will come on December sixteenth. And if approved, then the ordinance would stay in place for up to six months, one hundred and eighty days in there while the city is, is wrapping up and finishing its business on that, on, on this particular ordinance. Um, in, in the period of time since this has been out there, um, I, I met with, uh, shoot, the state, state agency, um, and, and some of the park residents. We had a very good, good dialogue, uh, because that agency was part, is part of the state committee that's responsible for the development of the model ordinance. Uh, there was a good sharing of information. Uh, we looked at Westbrook's model that's been out there since nineteen ninety-one, so I thought that was a very good, uh, piece of information to capture on to. We looked at Old Orchard Beach, what they did with their, their ordinance. It's, that's brand new, but, but implemented now. Uh, and we looked at a couple of other examples of, of ordinance, ordinances of varying levels that are, that are out there as well. From there, uh, I then went to Greg Payne. Greg Payne is in the Governor's Office of, uh, Policy and Innovation. He is the advisor on housing in the Governor's Office. Uh, very good conversation with, with, uh, Greg Payne. I've always found him to be an exceptional resource. Uh, he, he gave me the information that the model ordinance is due, the draft is due out the end of this week and that he would share that with me at that point in time. Uh, in looking at and in discussing the model ordinance with him, I guess a starting disappointment is, um, the model, Greg indicated that the model ordinance will have, uh, will identify all of the moving parts, that's how you would, uh, you know, identify like a capital improvement program and how that could implement cost and such and to that. But the model ordinance is gonna be very much left to the local level to finalize the details to make it work for our particular municipality. That being said, we'll at least have that starting point that other municipalities in the state. And since, um, Sanford put its moratorium in place, other communities have followed suit and put moratoriums in place as well, also working on the same, the same element. So, uh, that's the information that I have at this point.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Ann?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to share that, um, I, I would be, when this comes back up, I, I won't be here, but I would be in approval of the, uh, you know, extension of the moratorium, but I do want to just put pressure on us, um, as a council and as a community to, uh, move forward with our ordinance as soon as possible after the state, um, completes their work, just because I, I do fear that we have a good handful of really, um, fair, reasonable, mobile hu- you know, mobile park owners here in our community that, um, have to had to put things on hold where they're costly. So I just wanna be cognizant of that.
Thank you, Ann. Uh, Jonathan?
Um, I still do not support this, um, this, uh, plan. Um, I think that, that it will have a lot of unintended consequences. Uh, while I do feel bad for the tenants, um, I think there may be some other options they can potentially pursue, um, other than going down this road. Just making a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else with a comment? Oh, Nate?
I had to find the button. Um, I don't know if we, have we heard anything from, uh, the park owners, whether it's the larger ones we, we talked about before or some of the local ones about how this is impacting them? Um, I don't know if we've heard anything, Steve, uh, just any general input?
Good feedback from one of the, I'll call, a, a local park owner that had not made lot rent changes prior to this taking place, uh, that probably is a little remorse that, 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 that they didn't prior, prior to. Um, but we, we know that for the, the out-of-state parks that made significant changes, that was in response to the state's action to create a model ordinance and, and put, put some levels of controls in place. So they made their, their changes in lot rent prior to that state law coming, coming about or the model ordinance being developed. So, uh, I, 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 my comments are in support and recognition of what Council Hanselman said that, yes, we need to act on this as quickly as possible and ensure that, you know, the, the reasonableness stays in here so that the owners can operate accordingly. But the unreasonableness perhaps is addressed. My, my continued fear and recognition is that some of that damage has already been done and will be almost impossible to undo.
Thank, thank you, Steve. I would just echo Council Hanselman's comments about, you know, the pressure and it sounds like we're on board on that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll see this on our next, our next meeting again. All right, so we are now at the end of our meeting, believe it or not, at six forty. Uh, so any council comments? Ann?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I do have a planned vacation, it won't be the, the last council meeting of this, uh, calendar year. I did wanna just give a brief shout-out to Council Stackpole, who I've really enjoyed, uh, working beside for many years now, in fact, uh, seven years. And he's been here, of course, beyond that timeframe, but I'm appreciative of what he's brought to the table. Uh, things I've learned from him from a, uh, zoning and, uh, you know, uh, uh, waste standpoint and, and just really enjoyed working with him. Just wanna give him a shout-out of thanks, as I won't be able to do that at the last, um, meeting that he's technically a councilor on. So hopefully he hears that, uh, or it gets back to him that I'm very grateful for his service and the ability to work with him all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Jonathan?
Uh, I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have the parade going on this Friday. Um, and, you know, we are supposed to get more snow a little bit later here, so I think this is gonna continue for a while, so please stay safe on the roads.
And does anybody have the time of the parade that we can tell everybody when it starts? Uh, there's no parking on Main Street in front of Franny's or the Old Hoosers or all that is clear. We had problems with people last year and it's supposed to be cordoned off this year, um, so that people won't park there because it became a real problem. So what, what is the time of the parade starting?
Five, five thirty, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Pete, five thirty. So that'll be great. And then the tree lighting is later, uh, after the parade. It's always exciting. Uh, the kids are just so excited about being out there on Main Street and seeing everything happen. So even if you don't like parades, the fun part is watching all the kids just see, um, all the excitement and stuff. So uh, it's a good time in downtown Sanford. Any other comments? Go ahead, Steve.
They anticipate, I'm sorry, they anticipate the tree lighting to be around six fifteen. Um, I also will put a note out there, we are looking for our next Christmas tree. It's been very difficult. I know Council Hanselman wants us to plant a tree. We've gotta get to that point, but, um, the, the, the trees are getting scarce. So the, the sources are, are running out. We think we might have one more, but after that, we're, we're, we're out. So uh, just a shout-out to people that might have a nice-shaped tree that they wanna have come off their property, let us know. We'll put you on the list and be happy to take it off your hands in, in the future.
Anything else? Anything for the future agenda items? Ann?
I think Deputy Mayor Hurley had mentioned this in passing to me. I don't know that it has been brought forward as an agenda item, but I'd like to, there to be a discussion around dumpsters in our downtown corridor in particular. And just discussion around, is there a way to secure, prevent overflow, better hide them perhaps? We, we were talking, Jeff and I at Franny's about, gee, should we build a fence around our dumpster there to hide it from that back parking lot area? And for example, um, you know, I've just noticed an increase in overflowing dumpsters of late and then trash, uh, you know, lands around it and then blows around everywhere and just makes a mess. And I think it's, it's just not a nice look, especially in our downtown corridor, but, um, I, again, I, I, Maura had mentioned that. I don't know if that ever came up in, uh, deeper discussion. If it hasn't, I'd appreciate maybe some conversation around it.
I think it was after I saw a dumpster behind Downy Flowers. I'm like, why is that sitting on the sidewalk? Right? I, I just, I, there has to be better.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Uh, I just wanted to say that I, I agree. Uh, I think there are some rules in place for dumpsters, but I don't think they've been enforced. I know the dumpster over by the city hall parking lot, uh, I'm not sure who exactly owns that, but it's almost always overflowing. Um, so yeah, I'd be more than happy to take another look at that, some further discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and the one thing I remember was trash people, they would always try to convince me to do one every two weeks, we, to help bring your costs down. And I suspect that might be partially why they're overflowing. People are trying to keep costs down by having to remove the leffons.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. And Matt Hill?
Hi, yeah, uh, Councilor Martel is correct. There are some ordinances, uh, they just need to be enforced. Uh, I believe, uh, they were put into place maybe two or three years ago.
Okay. So we probably just need to review the, and let the public know what those are. So if we put that on an agenda meeting, we can get that information out there, um, to everyone. And, um, also I would think that the companies who, uh, own the dumpsters and distribute those would know that they're picking up dumpsters from people that are so overflowing that they should be able to tell them, you are not an every-other-week pickup. You are an every-week pickup, uh, and maybe charge them double or something, you know, so that they will stop doing it. So there's gotta be some type of consequence here. So we can discuss that, um, at our meeting and see if there's some problem solving we can do. We're great at that. All right. Good. Anything else? So we'll see hopefully all of you tomorrow night at the, uh, SPAC auditorium there. It would be great. Yeah. Um, I'm glad you presented that, Steve, the agenda. I think that, that might get a few other people to, to pop into. And, uh, so it is now six forty-six. I think this is one of our earliest meetings. Uh, so thank you all.
The snow is very light right now. I'm looking at my.
What was that, Maura?
Snow is very light right now.
It, it, they just plowed our road too, so it's, it's great. And that noise you were hearing was my husband's house snow blowing. So, all right. Well, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.